Welcome to the candidates forum for the Sunnyvale City Council District Six. My name is Elaine Manley. I'm the co-president of the League of Women Voters for Cupertino and Sunnyvale, and I will be the moderator this evening. As I see Richard Lesher has joined us as one of the candidates, I'm going to ask Eileen Lee if she would like to turn on her video as well. I am going to cover a few topics on voting before we get into the actual questions for the candidates, but we're delighted to have you with us tonight. So if my person can help me with the next slide, we'll be explaining a little bit about the Zoom. This is a Zoom webinar, so only the candidates and I can be seen. The attendees are muted and the session is being recorded, so we strongly encourage you to please share the link when it comes out in a few days with all of those in District Six. Our website there will be LWVCS.org/election-forums, and we should have it up in the next couple of days. All right, so a little bit about the League of Women Voters. You can go back one slide, please. There we go. We are a nonpartisan organization founded in 1920. We have men and women in our league, and our league is at all levels of government, from national to state to local. We represent Cupertino and Sunnyvale, but as an organization, we being nonpartisan means we never support or oppose our candidates or political parties. We have two separate legal organizations. One is Voter Service or Voter Education, and this is an example of that. The other legal organization is the one that does action and advocacy. When we study an issue deeply and decide are we going to take a position on it for or against it, then we would take action, but it would be a separate type of forum, and we don't mix the two. We are all volunteers, so I do want to put in a quick plug. We'd love to have some help. Please consider joining the League of Women Voters to help us provide these services to our community. All right, next slide. So we do have a couple of resources that we're going to share this evening. One of them is Vote 411. For those of you that were familiar with Voters Edge, that was a website we were using before. Vote 411 is a national website available in all states representing all cities. And so now you go to vote411.org, and you can see you can register to vote there, you can check on your registration, and you can find out what's on your ballot. We're pleased to say all of the candidates have listed all their information into the Vote 411, so we encourage you to check it out. And thank you candidates for doing that. It'll talk about ballot measures as well as candidates. All right, next slide, please. So as you know, California is all vote by mail now, and there are three ways to return your ballot. One is, of course, you could fill it out and put it in the mail. There's no postage necessary. It is important that it's postmarked on or before Election Day. A second way to deliver it is with a Dropbox. There's a ballot Dropbox. They will be official Dropboxes posted around our county, and you can drop them in and they're picked up. Even the league is going to be picking up ballots and delivering them straight to the registrar voters. Vote centers are also going to open four to 10 days before the Election Day, and you can take your ballot in there. We do want to also do a quick shout out to the registrar voters. Their website is excellent as well. ROV for Registrar of Voters, services.SCC for Santa Clara County, government.org. So ROVservices.SCCgov.org. You can check your registration. You can find out where the vote centers are, track your ballot, which is a great thing to do. Type in where you're voting from, click on I want to track my ballot, and the barcode that's on there will help track it. So that is available for you with the ROV. Next slide, please. Excellent. So at these vote centers, as I mentioned, you can go and vote. You can drop off your ballot. If you make a mistake on your ballot, you can go get a replacement ballot there. So you can get them at the registrar, but you can also get them at the vote center. And they have them in multiple languages, up to 14 languages now. So if you find that you need it in a different language, it is available for you. It's super important on your ballot itself, make sure you're using a black or blue pen. Make sure you complete both sides. Sometimes you forget to look on the other side of the ballot, but there's many times there'll be something on both sides of the ballot. When you get your ballot, pay attention to how they listed you. Did they list your first and last name? Or did they list your first, middle, and last name? Because you want to sign it the way it's been received, and usually the way you sign on your driver's license. So if you don't have your signature and date on there, your ballot just gets set aside. So you want to make sure that your vote is counted, sign and date the ballot, and turn it in on time. Thank you. Next slide. So we're talking about District Six tonight, and this is the map of District Six. You can find out if this is your district or not by going to this ROV Services. They have their tiny URL lookup or this going straight to their ROV Services. Either one can tell you what district you're in. But only the voters in District Six may elect the candidate for their council that will be representing them on the council. So we are excited to have our candidates here. If we can go to the next slide. So there are three candidates running. Unfortunately, Beverly Blau could not join us tonight, and she was not able to provide a statement for us in advance, so we would encourage you to go to her website, bevforSunnyvale.com to learn more about her. We are delighted to have both Eileen Lee and Richard Lesher with us, and you can see their websites, eileenforsunnyvale.com and Richard Lesher at votleshur.com. So welcome candidates. Let's bring down the slides, and I'm going to walk through just a couple of the rules that you would agree to, just as a reminder for you, but also for the audience to understand. So our candidates have agreed to the format and the set of ground rules that we provided. I'm going to pose questions to them that we have gathered in advance, and we're going to take turns going back and forth on who will answer first and second. Each question is going to have a response time of 60 or 90 seconds, and we'll let you know that so that you know how much time. We have a timekeeper here where you see the word timer, and he'll kind of guide you as the time is ticking away. So you can wrap up your sentences so that you do stop on time, and we appreciate you respecting each other's time. Perfect. There's the example of the slides. And we do ask, we've been asked by the Federal Election Commission, when you tell somebody about this recording or you refer to it, the Federal Election Commission requires that the entire recording be made available. And you can say, hey, just look at these minutes, but you can't snip out of the form a recording. You have to provide the whole recording. So we will have that link once again available on our website. We've given each candidate three rebuttals of 30 seconds each. Should they find there's something being said that they'd like to address, just raise their hand either with your hand physically or raise hand on the Zoom call. And please just, you know, don't go off topic. Let's make sure we stay on the topic that we're on. And just so the audience knows, we have only provided the candidates with the first and the last questions. We have not provided them with any other questions. So we extend a warm welcome to you both. When we drew the names to see who would go first, Richard Lesher will go first on the first question, and then Eileen Lee will answer her side, and then we'll go back and forth on who goes first. Okay?
Okay.
Perfect. So that first question for 90 seconds is, why are you qualified to be our council member for District Six?
Okay. With my professional life experiences ranging from a 20-year career in financial services and administering hundreds of millions of dollars in deposit portfolios, community involvement, and service to community from my time on nonprofit boards, the Sunnyvale Personal Board, and service in the Army Reserves, I'm prepared to take on the role of city council member. I'm a longtime resident of District Six, and it's the only home my children know. They both go to public school, and it is of importance to me that they are allowed to thrive here, as well as all of their classmates through the rest of their growth and development of adulthood. As a physician, I will work tirelessly, as I have similarly with other public service roles on nonprofits and military service, and as I have currently displayed, working the full day at the Calabasas Creek Cleanup on September 21, resulting in being covered in filth and getting sunburned. I prioritize the community over politics and withdrew from a previous candidate forum in replacement of attending the semi-annual mobile home MOU meeting. I will fully commit myself to the service and role of council member, and I will continue to focus on community over politics.
Thank you. Eileen Lee?
My name is Eileen Lee. I'm a candidate for Sunnyvale City Council in District Six. I'm currently an elected trustee to the Sunnyvale School Board, where I have been participating in the development of our strategic plan and welcoming families and children back to schools after the COVID-19 pandemic. I am familiar with the role, with the expectations of the role. I know how to set policy, look at budgets, and determine land use. This is something that I have been doing for the last two years, and that I feel that I would be able to do more of and better on the city council. I have had the honor of representing my constituents in the trustee area five, which overlaps a lot with District Six. I primarily interact through this role with children and families, but I have been striving to make myself more accessible and to learn more about the needs of other residents as well. District Six has been historically underrepresented on the Sunnyvale City Council, and it is my opinion that District Six deserves not just an advocate on the dais, but an activist, someone who has been fighting for District Six for the last two years and beyond that, and before that in other places in other boardrooms, not just mine, but in other ones where I get the same three minutes as everyone else. And I know I can continue to be that person. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. So we'll start with our next question, and Eileen, you will go first. This is 60 seconds to answer. Please share your top three priorities for Sunnyvale.
My top three priorities for Sunnyvale are combating the housing affordability crisis. This is something that affects the region, not just Sunnyvale, but that we have our own part to play in. It is my opinion that we need to take a firm stance to combat homelessness before it happens by providing people with the necessary safeguards and guardrails to prevent them from ending up on the streets. Everything is more cost-effective in prevention mode, just like in healthcare. My second one is combating the climate crisis. This is an existential threat to us everywhere. This is the hottest October that I've ever had, but maybe the coolest October that we're going to have for the rest of our lives. And thirdly, and as part of that, expanding our actus transportation plan. And finally, preserving retail. This isn't primarily District Six, but it is, this isn't only District Six, but it's a lot of District Six, making sure that we're able to preserve retail in the north part of the city.
Thank you. Richard?
My top three priorities, very similarly, some with Eileen, is address the housing problems with adding more housing and pursuing the Moffett Park Housing Plan that has slated 20,000 units with 4,000 affordable housing units to help reduce the cost of housing. Secondly, Sunnyvale does not have a paramedic resource that is its own, that it controls, and as a result, they have higher paramedic times. Now, we're not talking about EMT times. We're talking about paramedic times. And then, thirdly, again, with what Eileen had mentioned, increasing retail shopping opportunities in Sunnyvale as a whole, and more pressingly in District Six regarding grocery stores and pharmacies and such. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, our next question is also 60 seconds, and we'll start with Richard. Sunnyvale is a great place to live, but we still have problems. How would you address issues like break-ins and thefts and illegal fireworks?
Okay, I personally am endorsed by the Sunnyvale Public Safety Officers Association, and more additional resources are needed for task forces. That's how to address it additionally, and fireworks are a particular problem, and I would like to start, see a task force started up before, like springtime, as in be prepared to suppress those those problems that inevitably happen and continue into the fall.
Thank you. Eileen?
Could you please repeat the question?
Sure. Sunnyvale is a great place to live, but we still have problems. How would you address issues like break-ins and theft and illegal fireworks?
Break-ins and thefts are something that the city council right now is striving to address through license plate readers, that we have license plate readers on that are able to track cars coming into the city to do crime and then leaving. I think that's going to be a big help. Another thing that I think is going to be helpful is the governor's recently signed slate of bills addressing retail crime. One of these expands the ability of the county to pursue property crimes that, repetitive serial property crimes below $950, which right now are considered petty theft. Those things I think will help. Also, from the city council standpoint, I think we need to lean more into some of our some of our technological solutions like those like those cameras, but I would like to see a fireworks task force. I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next question. We'll have 90 seconds to answer, and we'll start with Eileen. The debate on growth and housing continues in Sunnyvale. Concerns about growth include how to maintain the style of life that has drawn people to Sunnyvale, traffic congestion, water use, tree planting and maintenance, and more. On the other side is the real need to meet the legal state mandated growth in housing. What do you think should be done to balance all of this?
So in my opinion, District Six as it stands isn't optimized for residents. We are the victims of haphazard city planning that has prioritized the the other things that are up here. We have a lot of tech companies up here. We are optimized a lot of the times, or at least it feels that way for commuters, and that is understandable because District Six until about 30 years ago didn't have a lot of people living up here. It wasn't until we had Tasman Crossing come in that the developments there pop up that that those industrial sites became housing. We need to plan for that. When we talk about planning for Moffett Park, we need to make sure that we have these things in place, and I think the city has done a great job with the Moffett Park specific plan. We need to follow through. We need to make sure that that is a walkable community, that we have those inlets and outlets, and people are able to come in and out, that there's not congestion. Right now, the way it's drawn out, it looks great. We need to be able to adapt on the fly if something becomes a little bit less great. We need to be flexible, and that is something that I think I've demonstrated an ability to do on the school board, that I'm able to pivot quickly and see things that need to be done. But we need to, we need to listen to residents. We need to hire more people to trim trees. We need to allocate that money in the budget. A budget is a statement of our values, and we need to tell our residents that we care about them.
Thank you. Richard?
So I understand this question is a concern about growth and maintaining the style of life in the community, and growth is happening. That's coming. That's coming. And we're fortunate to have Google as a huge footprint regarding the Moffett Park Plan, but the state has, or I'm sorry, the city has become a victim of the state mandates. And some of those we can't stop with owner occupied ability to increase their congestion by ADUs and slicing and dicing their properties. But to agree with Eileen on the Moffett Park, and I think we have a better chance of making our rollouts of projects that are new projects in new areas to start with that development from the ground up to allow these projects to include the green initiatives to add the retail without having to figure it out later at the end, and it will take adjustment and reevaluation of that park until it fully matures to what it was intended to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next question, we also have 90 seconds, and we'll start with Richard. So now we'll talk about the local economic contribution. You know, originally, the village centers were supposed to provide retail to support that village. Local grocery stores and restaurants will be forced to close with the new village centers creating this food desert. The benefit of locally owned businesses is they normally source goods and services from other nearby businesses and reinvest profits locally, whereas chain restaurants and stores may not use local sources, and their profits tend to flow outside our city. What will you do to protect and increase the number of local small grocery stores and retail stores in the neighborhood villages?
Okay, so I think of the three candidates, this one, as well as Beverly, she lives across Lawrence for myself, is the threat of the change that's going to happen with the Lawrence Town Center, and we're we're seriously looking at losing the grocery store right there without a plan to replace it anywhere else. The retail footprint is going to shrink. So what will I do is I will drag my feet kicking and screaming, and when push comes to vote, a vote for on that, I will certainly be a no vote without without a replacement plan for an equivalent or larger grocery store solution. So I understand the town center will have to be what it potentially will be, but we cannot ignore the future needs of District Six and other districts, as they also fall victim to those developments. If we make it easy to add the things that we want and drag our feet on the things that we don't, that's the best solution, I think.
All right, thank you. Eileen?
The tragedy with the village centers is that they had great intentions. We really want, the city council at the time really wanted to have livable, walkable spaces so that people could live where they live and shop and do what they needed to do, and that's something that Sunnyvale has talked about and something that we've been serious about until the passage of SB 330, which forced a lot of cities' hands to build housing. So our density was locked in place at 18 units per acre. That really needs to come up. That needs to be at least 38 to support retail, and that's not something that can happen right now without a lot of, not just kicking and screaming, but but litigation. We're going to probably have to take this further than city council, and we're going to have to build a coalition to do that. Right now, I think that there are enough people on city council who are concerned about this, that that is something that is in the city's future. The other thing that I want to talk about doing is preserving space in Moffett Park for displaced businesses. I really want to see there be a space off of Java Drive for Giovanni's Pizza or Metro City Kitchen, which is currently on Dwayne. This is something that I've seen happen in Mountain View off of El Camino and Castro. They have Rosa's International Market. I was there, and they built housing up and top and around it and saved them that space. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this next question is back to 60 seconds, and the rest of the questions will be at 60-second answers, and we'll start with Eileen. On village centers specifically, do you support increasing the density in the remaining village center sites? And what zoning density do you think will meet the desired development of housing and retail on the remaining village centers?
Yes, I do. I think that right now the city council has broadly planned to increase housing along transit corridors, and that includes, or to me, it should include Lawrence where the Lake Haven side currently is. Also, the Lawrence specific plan right now has housing and retail going in. Right now, it's 18 units per acre. I believe that should be kicked up to 38 units per acre, which is a little bit more than twice that. But because housing subsidizes retail, we really need to get developers in there and make it profitable enough for them to want to build that retail that our residents need. If we are serious about tackling our climate crisis, and that's something that the city council talks about a lot, then we need to make sure that we lower the amount of vehicle miles on the road. That means that District Six residents shouldn't be driving to get to a local grocery store, and that means that we need to get serious about upzoning these places. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard?
Yes, I do agree that there needs to be more density in the village centers. It needs to be a level like 38, 40, 38, 40-ish that supports retail investment support. And when these residential areas and retail and commercial areas are developed, that the supporting infrastructure is in line with the green initiatives and the transportation plans that will reduce the overall impact to carbon emissions.
Thank you. All right, our next question, we'll start with Richard, and this one is, how can we make it safer and easier for students of all ages to get to and from school?
So this hits in, for example, the Tasman project going on and possibly closing down a lane and reevaluating the pathways and roadways to the schools, because I'm the parent, that is the stay-at-home parent that takes the kids to school. And it's very clear to me oversight and review of the safest routes for those kids to ride their bikes, to use their feet need to be evaluated on a continuous basis to get them closest safely to the schools.
Thank you. Eileen?
Could you please repeat the question?
Yes, how can we make it safer and easier for students of all ages to get to and from school?
Of all ages is a little bit tricky because those preschoolers aren't going to get to school by themselves, but I will say that my son biked to school this morning. It was fantastic. He loves the autonomy of it. The one place that he passed across that terrifies me is at Fair Oaks and Weddell, where the city and Caltrans, I think, are fighting it out a little bit to determine who is going to be fixing that big overarching light that's supposed to block cars from going too fast coming off 101. I believe that expanding the Tasman bike lane is going to do a lot for kids in elementary and middle school, going back and forth to Lakewood and then to Columbia, because right now the kids in Tasman Crossing have to cross Fair Oaks to get to Lakewood or have to get to cross Fair Oaks and Lawrence to get to Fairwood. But the other thing I think will help a lot is having the shuttle, the Via Shuttle, that's going to help high school students get to Fremont, because right now those kids have to take a VTA bus or two, and having the Via Shuttle give them door-to-door service is going to be absolutely game-changing.
Thank you. All right, our next question, we'll start with Eileen. There's a lot of emphasis on bikes and bike lanes, as we were just saying, and not much on sidewalks and crosswalks for seniors and others that need to walk. What is your strategy for clearing the backlog for sidewalk repairs, considering that aging population, and how can we improve the location of crosswalks?
Lakewood, the Lakewood neighborhood recently got a state grant. I believe it was for $1.75 million. It's either 1.75 or 0.75, but either way, it's a lot, but it doesn't go nearly as far as you think it does, and that's going to help a lot. There's just some like random bits and pieces that don't make total sense, like when the the driveways don't quite line up with where you're supposed to be crossing to on that side. I think examining things like that, the city got that grant as a part of a Safe Route to School agreement with the state, but that's going to help seniors as well. The other thing that I think is going to help is tree maintenance, like having, not just having sidewalks, but having trees that shade those sidewalks, because that's going to make sidewalks a lot more accessible. We do need more people on sidewalk duty, on fixing sidewalks, on making them less bumpy. My husband is visually impaired, and it's very difficult for him to cross, to walk safely, and this is something that's very close to my heart, and I will be fighting for improved sidewalk maintenance. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard?
Okay. So the city should, you know, expand its allocated maintenance resources for the, so we would be able to up the repair cycle for sidewalks and repairing of crosswalks. And in relation to the tree maintenance, the city did sign a contract and outsourced those services. Those services should also be expanded through that expanded maintenance to include more employees for the maintenance departments and shuttle services for those that, you know, have trouble with transporting themselves with their own feet in their elderly years should be expanded upon as well.
Thank you. All right, next question, we'll start with Richard. It says, what strategies would you prioritize for addressing and supporting unhoused populations?
Okay, so unhoused strategies is going to always be a challenge. So two things come to mind. Urgency of need and ensuring that the helping hand is also helping them stand on their own feet. So those families with children that are in our schools and young children need to be addressed immediately as well as ensuring that they will be able to take care of themselves on their own if they choose to stay within our community and hopefully afford in the more expensive parts of living in California.
Thank you. Eileen?
The city is exploring a safe parking solution that will theoretically be able to assist families who live in RVs or sometimes in their cars, not just families, but people who live in their RVs or their cars. I've seen this succeed in Mountain View and surrounding jurisdictions. I go up to Mountain View and along Independence Avenue, it's parked up and down with RVs, and I just think that's so powerful. Like, some people are setting up these little like lawns where they put out kids' toys, and how amazing must that be for that child to be able to go, yeah, I have a place to go home to. 21% of unhoused families have children, and as a school board trustee, when they come through the doors of our school, Um, and as a school board trustee, when they come through the doors of our school, those are our kids. We're gonna take care of those kids. Like, it doesn't matter if they live in a very nice house or they live in RV. Those are our kids. Um, we also need to do more for prevention. Right now, at the county level, we are only able to house one family for every two that end up homeless and that we need to prevent that from happening. Thank you.
Thank you. So let's expand that topic a little bit on safe parking. What type of sa- safe parking solutions do you support and why? You started to talk about it, but if you could expand on please, and we'll start with Eileen.
Sure. I think this is something that the city has had before. There have been um safe parking solutions. Um, I believe previously at a church and that has been um shut out in the past, um didn't, it wasn't able to continue. I think that is something that we can um that we can explore further, um talking to our faith communities, seeing if they are able to uh make room for RVs, for cars. Um, also in Mountain View, they do wide roads, like where do we have wide roads? Um, and I was talking to a trustee at the Community College District who proposed that there are several parcels of land in District Six on the north side along the Caltrain tracks that could be suitable for safe parking as well. Along the Caltrain tracks, people are going to have a lot more access um if they don't have other vehicles to other services if they need those up and down the Caltrain, uh, sorry, did I say Caltrain? I meant the light rail. Along the light rail tracks in District Six, not the Caltrain. We don't have that. But that'll make uh services more accessible to them if they need to get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard.
Um, as it pertains to uh safe parking for RVs and mobile homes, uh, we need to ensure that there's a safety in those environments and they have availability to of the services uh for for simply living and simply helping to get uh themselves on their feet. And there needs to be a plan to have an exit plan for these safe parking areas. I I trust that this is not something that we want to see forever. Um, so we should be able, we should create a system that gets them the uh the help and assistance that they need. And also, there needs to be the consideration of uh the burden that will happen to the public safety department by effectively creating new neighborhoods out of the blue. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next question, we'll start with Richard and this is, what is your perspective of the Moffett Park Plan and how will you help balance housing with the other needs in the community?
The Moffett Park Plan, um, to oversimplify it, is like a a green or a blank slate of being able to plan uh all of the balances of all of the utopian great ideas that we want. Um, so what I see is little bits of it being executed at a time as uh the economics of the situation allow and the resources of the situation allow um and the community's desires. So if we can start with with the housing, that will bring if you build it, they will come and bring the numbers that will justify the retail and uh balance out the infrastructure needed towards our desired ends. Thank you.
Thank you. Eileen.
Could you please repeat the question?
Sure. What is your perspective of the Moffett Park Plan and how will you help balance housing with other needs in the community?
We need a school up there. Specifically, we need a high school up there. This is something that has afflicted students in North Sunnyvale for thirty years now, and not having a high school up there is going to affect these students even more. They're gonna have even more distance to travel from the from the farthest distance you have to travel right now. At one point last year, the commute time from my house to Fremont High School was forty-five minutes. B T A has cut that down a lot. But if you're gonna add half a Cupertino up in Moffett Park, there needs to be uh, there needs to be planning for that. At the school district level, at the elementary school district level, we were planning a K through eight school up there, but those kids need a high school to go to as well. Or we need to solve transportation for them. This is one of those things, even though I'm a very strong advocate of the shuttle, that I'm not sure the shuttle is gonna be enough. Uh, we need a plan to get those kids to school. That's, we also need retail up there and I would like to see the um the retail that uh might be displaced from District Six find a home in Moffett Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Our next question, we'll start with Eileen and it's, explain how you will support the revised Climate Action Plan and champion regional climate change initiatives.
Sure, um. The part of the Climate Action Plan that I am the most passionate about and know the most about honestly is the Active Transportation Plan. Because it's very easy to know all about the Active Transportation Plan as it exists in the current Climate Action playbook, because there is one line about it. It is improve the Active Transportation Plan. I think we need better metrics on that. Carbon emissions right now are the biggest uh, the biggest contributor to greenhouse gases. If we as a city are serious about combating climate, then we need to solve thi- this issue. Um, the shuttle is going to be great. We need to be working with regional partners to improve our transportation system overall, not just the shuttle. We need to have a bus stop at the senior center. We need to have a bus stop at the library so that people need, can get to these services. People who in District Six don't have access to these services nearby, need to be able to have a teletransit route there. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Can you repeat the question, please?
Absolutely. Explain how you will support the revised Climate Action Plan and champion regional climate change initiatives.
Okay, um, so this sort of goes to my philosophy of more housing. Um, we need to make it part of the lifestyle and the transportation and needs to be um improved scales of economies to make this work, um partnered with city and county partners and make sure that infrastructure reaches the key service destinations that the population wants to go to. Without needing, you know, it just reduces the probability of needing to get a car to go to a specific location.
Thank you. All right. Next question, we'll start with Richard, and this one is Measure E. Ask the voters, should voters approve a two hundred ninety million dollar general obligation bond to develop a new hundred twenty thousand square foot library? Do you support or oppose Measure E and why?
So I am voting yes on Measure E, right? Um, our facilities are are quite old and quite stressed, so that is a need. Um. It's the measure before us. I would have liked to to not have been such a a large price tag, but but that it's it's an all or nothing thing, so I'm saying um yes to it. Um, but it does cause uh voters to have to evaluate, is it something that's affordable for their households? Um, given the uh the burden that it will have on the uh on taxes.
Thank you. Eileen?
Similarly to Richard, I'm gonna be voting yes on Measure E. I am sympathetic to how this will um drive up costs in a time when a lot of people are already struggling with inflation. But that library as it exists is not earthquake safe. It needs a lot of improvements. It has been improved over the years, but it was built in the sixties and it's been ship of thesis so many times that you can't really uh do it anymore. Right now, we have the opportunity before us to build a library that will last for the rest of the century, to build um a library that Gen Z needs and deserves. We need outlets in there. We need meeting rooms. And if you go to neighboring municipalities and see their libraries, you kind of get a sense on what we're missing out on. I really love the library. I go there with my baby. Um, we do baby story time. We go to the Childhood Learning Center. And I look forward to going to the library once it's been um improved. And I think I'll love it even more. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next question was, we'll start with Eileen. How will you make yourself available to residents once you are elected as a council member?
Sure. This is something that I do have experience with as a school board trustee. I get emails and let me tell you that no one's quite as passionate as a parent emailing you about their child. So um, this is something that I have been on both sides on, honestly, um, being the parent and being the trustee. I um, I am responsive. I um know how, know who to forward things to, know um I can help people solve their problems to the best of my ability and that is something that I will continue to do. District Six, I think, um, we're far away from City Hall. I wanna hold town halls up here. I wanna have gatherings where we bring local government to the people who live in the district. At some point, when Lakewood Park is renovated, there's gonna be a buildings, a meeting space there or when the library is renovated. In the meantime, I want to ask some of our tech neighbors if they would be able to host some of my town halls. I believe the city council already has budget for this.
Thank you. Richard?
I have made myself available um to the voters. So my emails won't change, my phone numbers won't change, and those will continue to be open. Um. I will have posted a calendar and ability to meet during the first half of the working day to anybody who wishes to reach out to me and most certainly we can plan something. And I as well look forward to the library annex and that's probably going to turn into just so whoever gets elected is gonna be able to utilize that as our little place, um, cause I feel kind of bitter every time I have to go down to Murphy to talk politics. There should be a place in in our district as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next question, we'll start with Richard. As you will be new to council, how will you prepare to be an effective and efficient council member?
So when I started my candidacy for this, I immediately reached out to a number of the council members to meet them. And their their wisdom and guidance has been critical as I navigated through this. And that's how I would immediately focus on uh the people that I will be working with as their peers, as they guide me through your, the beginning steps and in the teething process that they experienced themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Eileen?
Sorry, could you repeat the question, please?
Sure. As you will be new to council, how will you prepare to be an effective and efficient council member?
Um, yes, I agree with what Richard said. Having talked to um the current council members is uh fantastic. And I'm just gonna call out a few things that I really love how Larry um has his um meetings every week, how he makes himself available on Fridays. I love how Linda sends out a newsletter. Um, and I love how Richard Mellinger is able to balance his full-time day job with his uh his council role and do such a great job at both. Um, I am a school board trustee and one of the hard things about being in an elected position like this is that I don't actually have a lot of control over what uh what what the district does. The school board um hires one employee, the superintendent, and similarly, the city council only hires two employees, the city attorney and city manager. The city manager has the power, but the city council members, um, I think, our real power is directing people to who they do need to talk to or who we can talk to with them to help get problems solved. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, we're doing really well on time. I've got some additional questions I'm gonna be able to add in here, so we'll talk about this next topic that you've probably heard about, and that's the artificial turf. So what is your position? And sorry, Eileen, you'll go first. What is your position on using artificial turf in city parks? Why? And what do you feel are some of the key pros and cons of using it or not using it?
Sure. So the, I am against artificial turf, especially for athletic fields, um, even though they see high use, um, which is a commonly a pro side argument. Um, the dangers of artificial turf, uh, as a scientist, I have a chemistry background. Um, these are things that I think that we're gonna look back at it like we look back at smoking now, like thirty years from ago. We're gonna say, oh my gosh, I can't believe we were putting plastic in our fields to kill all the natural biodiversity. But beyond that, um, we have artificial turf um in playing fields, but the one that's a little bit harder is as the um soft surfaces under playgrounds. There is not a good ADA compliant way to fix that right now. There is a sort of next generation tan bark that does a pretty good job, but it's something that I think we need to explore more and something um that requires a lot more planning than simply replacing it with artificial turf. And I think that's something that we need to examine critically, especially for accessible playgrounds like magical bridges.
Thank you. Richard?
Yeah, I don't think it matters who you vote for in regard to this topic for artificial turf. Um, and Eileen, in my mo- I think I met Eileen for the first time in a city council meeting regarding this topic as we spoke out and against it um for uh, I apologize if if that's not uh correct. Uh, so I'm I'm largely uh not in favor of it, especially in large patches. Um, and surprisingly, as I was looking, looking, going through the neighborhood's Orchard Garden Park, has a huge patch of artificial turf. Um, there are some maintenance p- um pros, um, but there's a lot of cons. And just walking through my park today, the the smell of the cut grass, I realized that would immediately dis- disappear. Um, but I I do believe for smaller sections of sidewalks and corners that it could be possible, but not large sections.
Okay, thank you. All right. This next topic is basic income. And um, we're gonna start with you, Richard, first. Question is, Sunnyvale is considering the implementation of a basic income program. What do you think are the pros and cons, as well as how it will be funded? Also, how would you measure the effectiveness and sustainability of the program?
So the the really only con is the cost of it, right? And then um, I'm generally for any social program, as long as the improvement of it can be measured. So if there's a a a section of the budget that's available to be there forever to fund this in perpetuity, the success of it would be seeing different people cycle on and off of it and seeing them succeed in life and not need that assistance. But this can't be in perpetuity for a group of people forever. And that's my time. Thank you.
Eileen? Oh, you're muted?
Sorry, could you repeat the question?
Sure, sure. So Sunnyvale is considering the implementation of a basic income program. What do you think are the pros and cons, as well as how it will be funded? Also, how would you measure the effectiveness and sustainability of the program?
Sure. So there's a saying in medicine, right? A pound of prevention is, uh, sorry, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And I think that applies broadly to a lot of things. Um, and the homelessness crisis is one of those. It takes, um, it we can do a lot more as a city to um to do, to help prevent homelessness, to prevent people from losing their homes. And in my opinion, no one knows better how people need to spend their money than the person, the, the potentially unhoused person or person who might become unhoused. Maybe they needed for food um this month, but maybe they needed for car repairs next month. There is not a good um funding source right now, and I think that's the biggest con. The city doesn't really have the budget for it. Right now, there are a lot of grants that we are applying for that I think we can continue to apply for, but once that that grant source money dries up, um, it's something that we need to examine more critically. I like what the city did. Um, the proposal is to have it administered through Sunnyvale Community Services, and I think they're gonna do a good job that we, sorry, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Very good. Um, this next topic, we'll start with you, Eileen, first, and you know, I'll preface it that both of you are brand new to council. And so maybe you have some great ideas, because attracting new people to run for local city councils is really crucial. And that helps ke- us keep a vibrant and representative local government. What are some of the innovative ideas you have to attract new talent to run for city council?
Um, I think that looking at our boards and commissions is a great place to start. People who have ex- existing um experience. Um, one of the other things is that we have a lot of local programs. Um, Leadership Sunnyvale is a great um is a great program that introduces a lot of people to the way the city council works. And similarly, there are similar programs for various ethnic communities. We have a Pol- a poly for the Asian community and there is a similar Latino one that's based out of San Jose and having and uh Emerge, which is for women. Having these programs really helps us build the bench to people who will potentially be interested in elected office, if not elected office and appointed office. And having people who are truly representative of our community coming out of those programs um is is so important to having a city council that truly understands the needs of the community. Um, we went to districts and the point of going to districts was to have a city council that looks like us and it is amazing, the um, this change that's happened in a very short number of years.
Very good. Richard?
Um, a few things. I I don't think the city and the the community understand the the accessibility they have given us as lowly little citizens by going to the district model. It makes it economically feasible for, I mean, myself and Beverly to literally walk to every single neighborhood or address free zone shoes. And we don't have to spend the money citywide. Um, the the councils and the boards are are critical. But it it also doesn't seem to be enough as well. And I'm, I guess I'm gonna be critical of somebody uh that is running and has met their uh service limits. But it is incumbent, I think, upon the council themselves to reach out and recruit and find those people that might be great, be great candidates. Um, because all you have to do is jump through a few regulatory hoops and you can get your All you have to do is jump through a few regulatory hoops and you can get your name on the ballot and people don't know that. And the the council should hope encourage the replacements.
Very good. All right, um, this next question is a very fun question. And we'll start with you, Richard. It is what is your favorite thing about Sunnyvale? And then what is your favorite thing about your district?
So my my favorite thing about Sunnyvale. I suppose, and and it's to my own demise, that um our children and their mother have been able to find so many programs for them to participate in. So they're going to karate, they're they're going to swimming, they're going to soccer. Um. Uh, so you know, that and being able to go to all of those things and keep these kids active. Um, is is wonderful and can you uh say the second part of the question again? I'm sorry, I forgot.
Sure, so is your favorite thing about Sunnyvale and your favorite thing about your district?
Oh, and then my favorite thing about my district particularly is the closeness of our park. And I guess the closeness of Seven Seas Park as well, because they have kind of neat water features. And the ability to walk down to the to market. Um, and I'm glad that I can walk to the In-N-Out, that's Santa Clara. But you know, everything is in in walking distance.
Very good. Eileen?
Thank you. Um, I really love how vibrant Sunnyvales you see people from all over the world who've made their home here and it's. I feel fairly unique to find a place where people from so many different backgrounds can feel safe enough to build a life. It's uh, my parents were refugees. They came here and they were able to settle down and build a life for themselves and. It makes me happy to see that's the case for so many people, people from from everywhere. Um, my favorite part about my district similarly is that we have that uh that vibrancy. We have a lot of immigrants. We have. We have older folks on fixed income. We have new families. We have people. Who are at all stages of their lives and they're able to to live here and. For the time being to afford living here and I I like that we are one of the more affordable places to live right now, that. We can welcome people and they can stay and they can grow to love this place. Thank you.
Thank you. Great, we're going to work on the last question now. So you will each have ninety seconds. And we're going to start with Eileen. Um. And so this is the question we provided in advance to you. What question do you wish we had asked you during this forum? And then please answer the question.
Sure, um. The thing everyone asks you when you're running is how is the campaign going? And I wish you'd ask that. Because I didn't have to run for school board. I just walked in and I joke sometimes that that's a stain on democracy. You should have a vibrant democracy where there are challengers. But I have to run this time and I just really appreciate the ability to meet all the stakeholders, to meet all the constituents. To learn more about my district before I start the job. It's going to help me learn how to do the job better, to be able to say, um. Yes, I met with, I believe, conservation voters, with the Sierra Club, with Planned Parenthood, with the Mercury News, with all these people. And I am going to work with them. I'm going to fight with them to make our community better and just to learn. Um, just to learn everyone's problem so that I can. Try to help solve them, to be able to meet my neighbors in a way that I didn't have to do the first time going around. Running for office is so humbling to have so many people believe in me and my vision for the city. It's just. It it's really touching how how many people I can I can lean on for support, how many people I can count on for help and. It's hard, it's really hard, but it's going great. My campaign is going great. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard?
Okay, I wish I was asked, what am I most proud of in my roles of volunteer service? Um, in my role with nonprofit uh organization Vanguard Music and Performing Arts in Santa Clara. I confronted a financial fraud in face of a very vocal and motivated motivated opposition to keep the status quo. In the end, the fraud collapsed and I was left standing in the ruins of an organization that needed to be rebuilt. My participation as a board treasurer built a coalition of board members and new staff. Members that resulted in the organization doubling its revenues. And adding two additional programs to reach out to more of the community's youth. And provide them an opportunity for a world-class performing arts experience. My role as a company commander in the Army Reserves over a hundred and fifty-three soldier soldiers and fifty-three million in equipment. Finalized in a capstone to my success as commander with my own soldiers reporting in a three sixty-degree peer review. That my unit was both above average in terms of quartermaster units as well as above average against all Army Reserve units. This told me on average, when my soldiers transfer out of my unit. And out of my command, they are not going to have it as good as they did when they were under my command. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you both. I'm going to ask my um person Debbie to bring the your slides up. Thank you so much for participating in this. We want to make sure that people know how to learn more about you and get your, get to your website. So as you know, Beverly was not able to join us, but do please check out her website, bevforsunnyvale.com. And Eileen has her Eileen for Sunnyvale. Notice the four is spelled out. So EileenforSunnyvale.com and Richard's website is votelusher.com. If you don't mind just staying with us for just a little bit longer, I want to go over a few more resources for voters. And uh, once again, thank you for participating in this. This has really been an excellent conversation, answering all of our questions. Uh, next slide, please. So our league is hosting all of these candidate forums and you'll see two ballot measure presentations. You can see this calendar on our website, lwbcs.org. You can also, uh, when you click in there, you can pick on whichever election you want to see. And if you miss one, you can go back and see the recording. So the recording for tonight's will be on the link for the October seventh forum. Um, I do want to take a quick moment to point out, we're going to be talking about the ballot measures. And on October sixteenth at seven o'clock on Zoom, we will explain all ten of the state ballot measures. And we're also going to cover the majority of the local measures. So we encourage you to attend or at least catch that recording. And once again, we'll put these on the website within a few days of each forum. Um, and please help us get the word out uh to others with that. Next slide, please. There are a lot of good sources of information and really as a voter, the key is getting factual information. We really need the truth to be known and there are a lot of great sources for it. Our website is one, votefouroneone.ca, votes, voter guide from the uh Secretary of State Ballotpedia. And the LAO is the Legislative Analyst Office. So if you want to take a screenshot of this or capture it on a on your phone, these are great resources for you to circle back to. And next slide, please. I think everyone knows this, but just as a reminder, please remember to vote. Tuesday, November fifth is Election Day. You can vote early, you can't vote late. Next slide. Thank you again to the candidates for joining us in this forum. I thank my fellow league members for participating and helping make this forum possible. And thank you for attending. Once again, please share the link with others. Let's help everybody get the word out so they can hear. What these candidates have said on all these different topics. Thank you and good night. Good night.